Yeah.
Okay.
PG Southwest TG. Do you see it?
Yeah, yeah, that one, the storage.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
The storage stuff there is active.
I.
Kind of.
What does he say? In the application, let's see.
Sorry.
Well, here it is. This is just being prepared to.
The landscaping and storage is what sort of makes sense, fit into.
Is that what they're doing? Just storing your, uh.
It's like contractors.
They contract that cliffy was an office.
No, it's not for him specifically, he's just gonna be renting out the building.
I see. But only for stories.
Like contractors and.
Are they getting work to be the sixth, huh?
To landscaping, construction, lands. To landscaping, construction yard?
Yeah, yep.
You just wanna get the use defined upfront, right?
Yeah.
Correctly.
Right.
Before submission.
Yes.
Where do you get from?
January?
January sixth.
No.
Be more, probably be the next one, be a week later.
Thirteenth.
Yeah, thirteenth.
Hey, I can't wait to see you.
Where are you?
Scott, how's it going? Good, you?
Good.
Thirteenth of January. That's the first one, yes.
He promised me.
How are you? Hello?
Hey, Scott.
I said you guys, I should be here in a few minutes.
Thank you for putting on these properly things.
Yeah, come.
Yeah, I heard it's a model, but it's still a telephone. Rockwell's gone now, right? Just a lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, um, one covered is also a lot.
I mean, that's what I meant. Not covered, yeah.
This is a public hearing record, right?
He must have had. What'd they do with the?
Should he try?
Do we want to pick special or is it just, what did they do?
Compared to my old one?
Yeah. Oh, big time, big difference.
No correspondence.
I suppose. So, Lance, under communication, all of that correspondence, that's actually part of the public hearing record, right? So it should be listed then.
Okay, underneath that application.
So that, so that gets into that record and not a separate record?
I wanna give you.
But it should be.
I love it, it's just table.
Where's he gonna start working on the rooms?
Yeah, one or two spots after that. Yeah, bench is gonna be off. Uh, just stories for the moment.
Did you hear anything?
I didn't.
No, I don't.
Well, it's only forty-five seconds, so he likes to get in at the.
What do we need to stick your toes back in again?
Everybody ready to go, is that on?
Yep.
All right. Everybody ready to go?
Will the green light be?
All right, we'll call the, uh, December ninth, regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Uh, I'm George Clausen, the chair, Pete Marsham's the vice chair. John Cooney's not here yet, Willie Clapp, Adam Quagley-Orley, Jamie Lavoie, and, uh, Rista Malanca, and Scott Eisenmore. Remember.
How are you, thank you.
Good. John, uh, we haven't heard from him, so let's, uh, just to start with things. Any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda? Agenda review, I'd like to just, uh, we've got a, uh, under new business, a, uh, special permit application, twenty-four fifteen. Like to see this, take that and, uh, set up a public hearing for the, uh, it's the thirteenth of January.
Yes, so move.
You have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Well, John's not gonna be here. Rista, could you sit in, in, uh, John's place for the start of the meeting?
Yep.
Okay. So, all in favor of that motion then? Thank you. So we'll do that for the thirteenth of January, so you're gonna take care of the advertisements, whatever you need to do with that.
You're gonna have to say that shit if you don't want. Not presenting tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, in the future, when we have something, an application, just let who the applicant is know that there's no presentation that night, so they don't come in.
Yeah.
And we don't have a meeting here, uh, on the twenty-third of this month, based on our twenty-four schedule. Okay, the, uh, we'll go forward with a, uh, public hearing for, uh, this is number four, it's PZC twenty-four dash one-four. Special permit application, applicant Paul Selnow, Architects Shadler, Selnow Associates, owner Winchester Housing Partners Incorporated. Address is one seventy-nine Pratt Street. Proposal provide an adaptive reuse of the existing Bachelor Elementary School and property by converting it into thirty-five units of affordable housing units with related interior programs, spaces, and parking. Now, you're not, you're not gonna sit with us.
Nope, I'm gonna recuse myself just because I'm in a butter.
Okay. So we'll see Charlene as the, uh, another person on the seated members. Owner, uh, we went through that, so provide an adaptive reuse of the existing Bachelor Elementary School and property by converting it into thirty-five units of affordable housing units with related interior programs, spaces, and parking. Can you read the advertisement that you replaced? Lance's place?
Legal notice. So notices hereby given that the Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing seven o'clock PM on Monday, December ninth in the P Francis Hicks Room, second floor Town Hall, three thirty-eight Main Street, Winstead, to act on the following. Uh, PZC number twenty-four dash fourteen, special permit application, applicant Paul Selnow, Architect Shadler Selnow Associates, owner Winchester Housing Partners Incorporated. Address one seventy-nine Pratt Street. Proposal provide an adaptive reuse of the existing Bachelor Elementary School and the property by converting it into thirty-five units of affordable hous- affordable housing units with related interior programs, spaces, and parking. At this hearing, interested persons are, may appear and be heard and written communications will be received. Copies of the above proposals are on file for inspection, planning and development department in a town clerk's office. This is dated on November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, and was running the ad for, uh, November twenty-ninth, two thousand four, and December sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
All right, we've got a number of, uh, staff reports, but we'll have you do your presentation, and then we'll, uh, talk about that.
Great, thank you, um, so.
You know, you have to.
Talk right into it.
Into it, otherwise they can't hear back there.
All right, I'll channel Taylor Swift or something.
Pull it right up to you.
Yeah, right.
Um, how's that? All right.
Can you hear?
Yes. Terrific. All right, um, so I am Joss Lanair, I am the Director of the Litchfield County Center for Housing Opportunity. Um, and I am a member of the team, um, for Winchester Housing Partners, working on this, this project with them. Um, just very quickly, we're, we are a nonprofit that works with ten other, all volunteer, nonprofit, local housing organizations in Litchfield County. Um, and so, uh, we do this, um, every day, try to help our local housing organizations carry out the projects that they would like to carry out in their communities. So, tonight we're here about the Bachelor School and its reuse. Um, behind me are, uh, many of the members of the Winchester Housing Partners Board, um, local residents, uh, this is a private, all volunteer, nonprofit. Um, and, uh, it was formed back in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, two of the board members have direct experience with Susan B. Perry, um, if you remember that over. Um, that is, uh, senior affordable housing, um, and went through that whole process with a similar team of folks to assist them back when Susan B. Perry was developed. Um, and one of our board members that's here tonight is also a direct neighbor of the Bachelor School site. Um, so, um, Winchester Housing Partners is, is the applicant. The team, uh, that has been assisting Winchester Housing Partners includes, uh, Paul Selnow at Shadler Selnow and Associates, and Jay, who's here tonight, um, from Shadler Selnow to, uh, present the plans to you. Um, housing consultant David Berto of Housing Enterprises, uh, who has thirty years of experience working on projects just like this one, including Susan B. Perry, um, and myself, um, of the Litchfield County Center. So, again, as mentioned, this is a proposal to convert the former, currently vacant Bachelor School uh, buildings into thirty-five affordable rental units, um, you know, basically turning the classrooms into, uh, housing units. Um, the proposal is really just to deal with the existing buildings, there, we're not proposing any new construction of buildings on the site. Um, this is obviously a residential use and a residential neighborhood. Um, the units will be affordable and accessible to households under eighty percent of the area median income. Um, so, for example, that's a household earning seventy-three thousand dollars for a two-person household. Um, so, again, we're hoping this will be housing opportunities for folks who are either currently living in town and, um, severely cost burdened, which you have uh, many households in Winstead and Winchester that are already paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing costs. Um, community college students, folks who work in the community but don't live here currently, um, seniors who have lived here, yeah.
Is there any way to get it on the screen as well?
It wasn't cooperating, unfortunately. I could try again.
So, Joss, it means there'll be rentals as well, I mean.
These are rentals, yes.
Oh, all of them are rentals?
Yeah.
I see.
Yep. Um, so just very briefly, a little background, um, again, in July of two thousand twenty-two, as you all might remember, the town released a request for proposals for reusing the school, uh, property, and Winchester Housing Partners, um, responded and was chosen in, in June two thousand twenty-three at a special town meeting to, um, be the entity that redeveloped the property. In September two thousand twenty-three, um, Winchester Housing Partners signed a lease and an option to purchase with the town um, for that property, and then we started work on the architectural plans, um, to get to where we are today. This is, the whole site is thirty-two acres. Um, the rough, the building is roughly fifty-three thousand square feet, it was built back in nineteen fifty-nine. Um, the picture here shows you, um, that, uh, Winchester Housing Partners is not intending to purchase the entire site, just the area to there shown in green, um, really right around the school building. As you know, there's, the rest of the parcel is, uh, forested and hilly, um, and, uh, we would certainly, we did put this in the original request for proposal response, would love to see that potentially, um, you know, provided, uh, by the town to, say, the Winchester Land Trust for permanent open space preservation. Um, but that will be up to the town, um, so, the plans we're showing you here, again, are really just intended for that green area, and just to explain this a little more, you'll see the area that's retained by the town kind of goes around to the right over there, and includes the barn on the property, which the town is currently using for, I think, for storage.
And they'll retain that?
Sorry?
And then we, they'll retain that?
Yes, so they would retain that. Um, and we talked with Jim Rollins quite a bit about the town's needs, um, and kind of worked out this, um, scenario where, again, we still have enough in the back there to be able to keep, you know, uh, trimming trees and things that we might need to trim, so they won't fall on the driveway, for example, but, um, that we're not retaining anything we don't necessarily need for this.
Just curious, why, why was that return on the left-hand side cut?
Um, again, it's just not, it's a, um, uh, my understanding is it's sort of like an access driveway that the town owns, um, used by those neighbors, so that isn't something that we, that the Winchester Housing Partners needs for this development.
So, so your development is on about ten acres, that green portion is about ten acres of the thirty-two acre site?
Correct, yeah. I think it's not, yeah, nine point something.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this is just a closer up version of the portion of the site that is, um, that is the, the subject of the application tonight.
You're not gonna do any other than removing pavement? Well, that should go through it.
Yeah, Jay's gonna talk about all of that, so I'm gonna hand it over to him to go through, uh, many of the, you know, uh, architectural plans that were submitted as part of the application. Do you wanna?
Which one?
Uh, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So this is part of the site here, um, the area that's kind of great is the existing, existing school, major two levels. Um, you can see the parking. Where's your, your pointer here? Thank you.
That top button thing?
Nope. There, what does it mean? Describe it. So the, um, the lower area is existing parking, there is existing, um, spaces for fifteen and co- fifty-nine cars. We're reducing some of that. Oh, there you got it.
Do you want me to point to?
Oh, just, just that front circle area. Um, that's where the bulk of the parking is, and, uh, if you go up to the upper right there, there's additional parking, there's existing uh, handicap parking up against the building, and if you go up the driveway to the upper level, there is parking on the, uh, the side of the road, we're gonna remove that, as you'll see in the next slide. Uh, and then way over to the left side of the building is exist- existing parking, and we're gonna modify that as well. So the area that's heavily hatched is areas of parking that we're removing. We wanna reduce the amount of impervious, um, or pervious, yeah, impervious area to, uh, help reduce the amount of waterfall that comes off the site. So we have some exist- existing parking and exist- existing walks that we're removing. Um, let's start with a circle down at the bottom there, we're removing a bunch of parking spaces there. Um, and if you go up through, we're making a connector from the building down to the lower parking. And, um, also, where's your mouse there? Oh, right there, uh, you know, existing new, or, excuse me, replacing existing walks with new walks. And there's a, um, in the area near the existing barn, will be, um, a dumpster area near the main entrance. Uh, if you can show, we're, we're doing a little bit of a, an addition, just a new entrance, uh, off to the side of the building, that's the only new part.
How big, how big an area are you putting in for dumpster?
Um, I think we just have one dumpster, maybe ten by fifteen total area.
You got thirty, thirty-five facilities in here?
I'm sorry?
You have thirty-five, how many units are you putting in?
Thirty-five.
And that's gonna be large enough to take care of that?
We think so, probably just, you know, regular terrace and, uh, recycling dumpster. We can look at that further.
You can also get it emptied more often.
True. Um, this area, this, uh, shot so, shows, um, some of the new places, new, uh, walkways, we have to have, um, exits out of each of the units to a safe haven for fire reasons. Uh, we do have an area that's, um, in the upper portion, in between the two buildings, that will be a couple patios in there, that's, uh, the largest one. Uh, we have some new parking off to the upper left. And new handicap parking over to the middle right. And that'll all meet, uh, current ADA requirements. Next one. This shows the planting, which, um, we've really thought about, you know, this is New England. If you look at Pratt Street, we're proposing to do a, excuse me, line of sugar maples. So you get that right, nice yellow color in the fall, you know, very typical of New England. And then we have areas of, um, mixed use, mixed color, uh, flowering crabs in various areas, like along that road there, and, uh, you know, near the upper portion there, and then even in the upper left portion. So there are mult- multi colors, uh, that people can look out and, uh, and view that. It's nice soft, middle-sized, uh, trees. Various other plantings include white rhododendrons, couple, um, spruce, blues, blue spruce. And then the, um, the shaded areas are steep slope areas that are probably typ- difficult to maintain mowing. And we're thinking about removing the grass and planting pachysandra, which is low ground, ground cover. So there's reduced maintenance there.
Let me ask you a question when you're in this, all the parking area, where's, where do you anticipate snow removal is gonna go?
Um, you know, anywhere off the, off the edge of the pavement, um, you know, there are a couple of areas that, um, like in the bottom left corner of the circle. Keep going further down, right there. Um, and at the, the area that we're removing pavement, it'll, can get piled up there. Um, and off in the upper left corner where we have new parking, there is areas up there that we can put snow as well.
So I know at one of the previous hearings on this, the residents across the street were concerned about the parking shining the headlights in across the street, because it should be more of a facility that's gonna be used at all different hours of the night. People coming and going.
True.
So you're really leaving the parking where it was, is there any blockage of headlights being put in there?
Well, on the, um, um, upper area, we've really kind of.
The lower area specifically, because that's high and it's gonna shine across the street.
Yeah, we will have.
Residents across the street were quite concerned last time.
We have new parking, new, uh, not new parking, excuse me, new, uh, new trees there that hopefully will help, uh, minimize that.
Well, those trees are only gonna help for.
Foliage.
In the spring, summer, fall, wintertime is not gonna help.
Why did you take that parking out of the lower area?
Just reduce parking. I felt it was.
Yeah. As this gentleman just brought up about the lights shining on the cars, in the area that you took out, those lights would be over the houses. If you want a blank area, it should be to the right as you're turning the corner coming in, you should probably take out those houses, those parking spots. Cause those parking spots, the lights shine right in the houses.
Okay.
If you put the parking spots back where you took it out, they'd be above the houses. Food for thought.
Food for thought, thank you. Uh, this is the, um, af- uh, actually, we have to look at, at lighting here, you know, since it's gonna be, um, occupied. So this, the areas that, that you see is yellow, is, there's no light there. And at the areas that's white, is a minimum of a one-foot candle, and, and many areas, a little bit more.
All the red indications you're aware of the lights are?
Um, yes. And we have eighteen, maximum eighteen-foot-high poles and bollards along the walks.
Ninety-degree cutoff?
Yes, yep. And they're all LED.
So you said again that the yellow is the place where the light isn't gonna get.
Correct, correct.
Just for people that aren't familiar with the, so the light isn't coming, it's all dark skies compliant.
Yeah.
And it's not going off the site.
Uh, here's the, here are the floor plans. You know, basically, we have one and two, the majority of, of the units are one and two-bedroom. We also have on this plan, which is the lower portion of the building, we have a, um, um, series of other spaces, community space, um, uh, multi-use space, offices, storage, bike storage, tenant storage, janitors, all support space. Next one. And this is the upper portion, again, mostly, uh, one and two-bedroom spaces. Center hall. A little bit of seating area for gathering of people.
So where do these all open out that central corridor, or is there outside access to it?
Yes, there's al- always outs- outside exits. Next one. And here you can kind of see, and there's a, uh, another slide that will follow, of the exterior elevations of the, of the school. Here we really wanted to, uh, differ- differentiate the individual units. We changed from, um, a long linear, uh, facade to vertical siding and horizontal siding with also some stonework. And each of the individual units will have a, uh, little small section of fence to give each individual outside space some, some privacy as well.
About how much space are you providing for them?
Uh, just where there's walkways, so maybe four or five feet wide, enough for a couple seats in the width of the units. Next. And where there's, um, large amounts of brick, and we have some areas that will be punching through that brick with, uh, with, with, uh, windows and doors. Next one. So that's what you see when you come up the building, up to the building. Existing, uh, brick area to the left, obviously, the new entrance is in the center of the slide, and off into the upper right is, uh, the upper portion of the building. And here's, it's, this is not complete, but, and it's not gonna be black or gray, but you can kind of see there's a difference of, uh, texture on the different elevations.
Yeah, these are not the colors.
Yeah, trust me. Yeah.
It's just trying to show you the different, different.
Structures, yeah.
Yeah, and I took out the other rendering, cause it really isn't, it wasn't enough.
Yeah.
But it ki- you can kind of, you can kind of see, actually, this is still the back, the best one, in the back, that, the different treatment, um, on the facade, that makes it more residential, um, and breaks up the units a bit, and again, kind of will help define that each unit will have some private space, private outdoor space and, and access. So, do you wanna just describe a little bit the facade treatment?
Um, yeah, we, yeah, we've, um, kind of, each unit is, is, is a little different. Uh, it goes from vertical, uh, siding, um, to horizontal siding, which is very typical of New England. And we also have some areas of, uh, of stonework. And we also have some areas of, uh, of stonework that we're incorporating into a separation area from one unit to another. Oh, here we have, uh, a number of parking spots, we presently have fifty-nine, we're going down to fifty-three. And, uh, town requirements are three-quarters of a spot for each individual unit, and we're about twice that.
For a unit or for bedroom?
Uh, per, per bedroom, so, I'm sorry, you're right. We do have, um, you know, we're, we're trying to be very energy conscious. Um, one of the reasons why we're reducing the amount of impervious, or pervious, or, excuse me, impervious, keep kinda going, screw it up. Um, we wanna reduce the amount of, uh, water that comes off the site. And, uh, there'll be obviously town sewer, town water and electricity. The rooftops, we're looking to provide solar panels to, uh, either generate enough energy for the units as well as possibly give back to the town. Or back into the grid.
Yeah, we, we have had initial conversations with Connecticut Green Bank, who has a new, um, multifamily program. Um, and basically, they'll, they'll pay for installing the solar panels on, uh, multifamily affordable properties like this. Um, they did an initial analysis and do believe that solar panels on the roof here could generate, at, at the very least, enough to power the whole development. Again, if not, to also put, um, enough power back into the grid. So, the one, um, benefit of a, of a very large flat roof structure. Um, and then lastly, we, again, just wanted to mention how the Bachelor School project, um, does help the town meet, uh, goals in the town's housing affordability plan. Um, and again, you know, current, um, HUD data shows that there are over a thousand households in Winchester now uh, that are severely housing cost burdened, um, and paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing costs. All of those households are under eighty percent of the area median income and all would qualify to live in these new units at Bachelor School if they wanted to. Um, uh, the plan also pointed out, um, as many of you are aware, um, that many rental properties in town have been purchased recently by for-profit investors. Um, and so it is, there is a shortage of, um, ha- uh, rental housing in the community that, certainly that is, um, you know, affordable, safe. Um, and, uh, recently upgraded. Um, and this would be, uh, dedicated to remaining affordable to those households. Again, managed and owned by a local housing nonprofit and would count on the town's, um, inventory under the State Affordable Housing Appeals Act, uh, the eight thirty G, um, list. So, um, you know, and also, again, you know, the housing plan did specifically point out as a goal to create additional housing options in existing, um, buildings, if, if possible, reusing existing buildings. So this, um, helps meet that, that goal as well. So that's our-
So Jess, can you, can you, um, tell, tell us, um, what the percentage of affordable housing is now in Winstead? What this will add to it and how that compares to area towns?
Um, I, let's see, I, I can bring up your housing plan. Um, I don't think it's changed much since, in the last couple of years, but I think you were at like eight percent. Um, let me see.
That seems a little, little low, but-
You were, you're below the ten percent now as of that last housing plan. Um, there are a lot of units at, um, Litchfield Heights-
Yep.
-that are no longer dedicated affordable. Um, they're no longer income restricted, so all of those came off your list. The only, uh, units now are, that are dedicated affordable and on the eight thirty G list are, um, restricted to seniors.
Say that again, that last part.
The only dedicated affordable housing that you have in Winchester now, um, other than, for example, you probably have a few folks with housing, housing choice vouchers or something. Um, you probably have some folks who have, um, you know, a, a CHAFA mortgage or something. Um, but the vast majority of the units that are dedicated affordable are, um, restricted to seniors.
And this is not gonna be restricted to seniors?
Correct, yes, seniors can still live here, um, and there are quite a few one-bedroom units, um, but it won't be age restricted.
So what would this bring us to then?
Um, again, I ca- I, I could do the ma- I don't, I can quickly try to do the math for you, it's thirty-five units.
We had one new house last year, so that didn't change things very much.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I'm guessing it might take you up half a point or something. It's not going to vastly, um, change the percentage of affordable, um, that you have now. So if you're at eight, maybe you'll be at eight point five, um, but it will, um, certainly, uh, add to the goal of getting you back up to ten percent, which I think is the, was the goal in the housing plan.
And can you speak to the area? You know, how the area is doing in terms of reaching a ten percent goal?
I mean, as you know, the, as you know, the city of Torrington is-
Well, I didn't mean that far away, how about our immediate area?
Well, the city of Torrington is not that far away, but, um-
I, I know where it is, but, you know, I'm talking about the, the towns that surround us.
Yeah, many of the other towns are nowhere near the ten percent, um, goal. Um, so, uh, you know, I think, um, in Salisbury, we're somewhere near, that's where I live, we're somewhere near three percent. Um, uh, but I will say, in the town of Salisbury, and we're working with two local housing nonprofits there on over sixty-five units of affordable housing in, uh, three different developments. So, um, you know, other communities that we're working in are also trying to create these types of units that are not necessarily restricted to seniors and that do create housing options for, um, for folks below eighty percent of the AMI.
Can we go back to the site drawings? Can you get back there? I kinda missed where the dumpster was.
So I think it's, um, right above where that barn is.
Correct.
Um, but I will try to find it here on-
It showed like a pull-up there, but that's all it showed.
Don't check the pull-up?
Wow, that's what, here, it shows on a couple maps here.
Here we go.
Oh, there it is.
This is-
Just a little apart.
Okay, thank you.
No, great, it's sort of parking area.
Okay, yep. That's all gonna be fenced and enclosed?
Right. Will it be-
How's the truck get out of there?
Besides room for a dumpster, will it be additional room for recycling bins and stuff? Cause I know, you know, we have some other condo complexes where the recycling bins sit outside of the dumpster area and they're out and exposed and so-
Not pretty to do that all in enclosed area.
Okay.
Look, looking at the location of dumpster and the, the orientation, I can see a truck can get in there, fork it out. Would they have to back down or can they go up to the top and turn around up top? I don't see an area where, uh, a refuge truck can, uh, turn around very easily.
I would think they would be able to back up to the left and then run down.
Yep.
Should be able to come back up, over to here and then run down.
Cause the dumpster used to be to the left.
Yeah.
Said they would pull up-
What, up against the building?
Yes.
Used to be.
Turn right and then back up to it.
They'll just have to do that.
Yeah, we always had it against the building previously when it was a school.
Do you have any areas for, I guess, personal storage and items for?
Yes, so, let's see, the, um, so there's quite a bit of space, you know, that was the cafeteria and gym that has no, you know, there, you can't really turn it into units, cause there's no windows. Um, oops, went back too far. Um, so, we have quite a large area here. This, all this space in here is, would be like storage lockers. Um, so each, each, um, resident would have a storage space, um, in there. Um, and we also have, like, some, these would be offices for the property manager. Um, we have a multipurpose space here where the community, there's like, you know, a, probably like a fridge and a oven in here. So people could have community events or meetings in there. Um, and then we have, we thought about adding here some kind of space where people could, if they work from home, they could, you know, maybe work, um, in these, these spaces in here. We were really just trying to, Winchester Housing Partners Board was trying to think about, you know, community amenities that would be nice and also don't require windows. Um, because there's that big gym space that, um, that we were trying to figure out how to repurpose. But there definitely is, um, uh, the board did feel strongly there needed to be sufficient storage in the building.
The, the exterior doors, are those, are those fire, fire doors, are those like, you'd say, could be a standard exterior door and a screen door? And then I would say, is there extended space for those individuals to be outside, semi-private, kinda like a condominium? We might have a privacy, partial fence to the next.
Yeah, that's what we talked about doing, uh-
I might've missed that, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, um, probably have a screen door.
Yeah.
You know, to have, at least out of the individual units and, uh-
Just so they don't feel like they're trapped in a school.
Yeah, yeah, understand.
Yeah, the idea was to, for everybody to have some outdoor space and, like you said, there, um, and I, it's, sorry, it doesn't show up very well in the rendering that we have, but, but there would be a sort of like a privacy fence between them. So there would be a little bit of, a private area outside. It won't be huge, but-
Is all the asphalt gonna be redone or is it all good shape?
I think when I was up there, it was pretty good shape and, you know, it's, it was accommodating buses, which is probably twenty thousand pounds, I'm, I'm guessing. And we're gonna be driving three thousand, four thousand pound cars on it, so it should last quite some time yet.
But there was some additional, you think, right, some, um-
Yeah, up to the far left, that'll be all.
Upper parking area.
Yeah, these areas here.
These plans that you provided us, there's one page where, one whole section on it has an abbreviated area that's not fully defined. You know, there's a whole list of eighteen or twenty, whatever it was. The whole left side is abbreviated, so it doesn't give you the full info. I don't know how you're gonna use these plans, but you-
Well, we're just using, we, um-
Not just for us?
Yeah, those are really just for your, for your own.
Okay, well, we're just, I, I could show you which one it is, but it's a, uh, something to think about, but, all right.
Did you, uh, as far as, do any kind of a study on occupancy, like with the fifteen two-bedroom apartments, uh, about how many additional children it may bring into the school system?
Um, not very many. I mean, we can, uh, there certainly have been studies about how many children, you know, multifamily developments bring in. Certainly, they would bring in more if we had three bedrooms here, um, we don't have any three bedrooms. Um, you know, like, it's, uh, likely that a few of the two bedrooms might be lived in, you know, by a, a parent, uh, with a child. But you can only have so many kids in a two-bedroom unit. So I, I don't think there would be a very large impact, um, of a number of, of schoolchildren.
Any other, other comments?
Um, I was gonna second the, uh, the, I guess, the, the cast of car lights and truck lights on neighboring properties. And if you could do, uh, like low, low shrubbery, but set back at a distance, so you could still have a, um, area for snowy gr- or snow removal. Um, rather than a guardrail.
Right, yeah, and I, I wrote that down too. And again, I, I think we definitely wanna do more thinking about the landscaping plan. Um, and, you know, we, we would love to do some more, um, uh, you know, community outreach and community engagement with the neighbors, specifically around the landscaping plan. Um, we're actually applying for a grant right now, uh, where a big portion of it, it will give us the resources to, to do that and have, um, a more robust community conversation around, um, this landscaping, but also the plan in general, um, with, uh, community investment, uh, funding. But we definitely, again, we have some board members that are here, um, that are also neighbors and will definitely, you know, want to make sure that we have their input on, on that when we do all the final, uh, thinking about the, the landscaping.
Is this all gonna be sprinkled?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it is now.
I just went up and looked at the distribution.
Yeah, it has to be for that, by, by fire code.
All right, is that all you-
Would, would it, would it be gated for, for only the residents or is it open to public?
Oh, do you mean, will there be a gate at the driveway?
Yeah.
No.
And then, uh, I'll, um, proposing this all at once or is it in stages?
Uh, I, I, I think we would do all, all thirty-five, we would do the renovation of the whole building at once, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Anybody in the audience like to contribute any questions? Yes, just who, who are-
Jill Zitney, one fifty-nine Pratt Street, the House of Great Nester. I'm curious about, um, a few things. First, the fence, the chain link fence that runs down the side between the properties. Um, I didn't really understand the drawing of that. What, where, how close is, um, the notice we got said it's a hundred feet from our property line, so how does that play in? Is that from the fence? Are you gonna do anything with the fence?
Well, I think the notice was just saying that something will be happening within a hundred feet of the property, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's like the standard notice language, but, um, yeah, I think we were contemplating, cause I, isn't the, isn't, is the, kind of right here? Is the chain link-
Is that stairway, the cement stairway?
Yeah, that's gonna be removed.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm talking about, that, that area up there, because right now, as it is, there's a bunch of trees that have, like, fallen onto the fence and things and I don't like, we've been trying to get it from our side. Um, so I'm, I, that, my concern is that, number one. And number two, more leaves, like, planting oak trees sounds beautiful, but they blow downhill. Um, uh, I know it's not a big thing, you, like, you know, we're all, so, um, and the snow removal. As it is right now, it looks to me like that upper left-hand corner is the upper playground right now.
Yes.
Is that incorrect?
Um, that's gonna be just, the playground will be taken out.
Here.
Okay, because right, as of this point, if you're talking about putting snow there, up there, as it is now, we spent thirty thousand dollars of remedying the drainage coming off that land right now. So, when you're talking about putting snow there-
I don't think we would put snow here.
Okay, it looks like when you said you would just like pile it over there, like, as long as-
It, it might've been my, my, like, a cursor thing.
All right.
Cause I, there's no, um, there's no driveways over here or parking, so I think what we were thinking is, again, that we would be pushing it kind of here and over here. Um, and it, it could go in here in the middle island.
Okay.
Um,
and also I do wanna say for the record, I think it's fabulous. I think it's a great idea, I, I love it, I love the idea of it, which is not enough. Affordable housing in the area. Um, I think more people in, in town live in walking distance of downtown, because we walk downtown. I think it's great, it would be good for, um, that area, that, that piece of it. Um, another thing is, I know a couple of my neighbors mentioned, will there be, um, light requirements for the property? Like, will people have to maintain- Like, will people have to maintain their space? Like, are there gonna be, is it like a regular apartment complex? I've lived in apartment complexes where you can't do X, Y, and Z, you're allowed to have literally like ten plants, your garbage can't weigh over twenty-five pounds. Like, it's been, like, I've lived in a lot of places like that. So are there going to be in the contract, something to that effect where you can't have, um, you know, fifteen flags, anything, things like that?
Yeah, so, um, there will be a professional property manager here on site. Um, and there will be a rental agreement that lays out all the things you can and cannot do.
Okay.
Um, and there would always be somebody that you guys could call if you, you know, if the tr- well, you know, or.
I, I don't, I don't need your first. I wanna nip it in the bud and make sure this stuff is like.
Yes, so there would definitely be, uh, again, a professional property manager who makes sure that all those things happen. The snow gets removed, the trash gets taken care of, um, and that anything, you know, any, um, you know, issues that come up are addressed.
Also, I wanna, I wanna see that there's up that block, that's gonna be removed, there'll be a border of arbor miding to prevent.
Those are the ones.
Of the reeds.
Okay, hers, okay. Well, it's gonna warn me.
Start a ring, yeah.
Those trees are all dying, like, it's, it's, um, Jim actually was up there helping me out. Jim actually was up there helping me out last month. Oh, grading.
What is that, it was that, I'm sorry, I'm Tim Bryant, I'm the other, the other resident there. Um, I, yeah, I was just concerned like where they were talking about the snow removal. Because that grade is, it, it's not gonna drain towards the street, it's gonna drain towards us. Is there any possibility of maybe?
It's gonna be drained towards us.
Yeah, is there any way to mediate?
Was it, was it doing that when it was the school? Have you been there that long?
Uh, we moved, we've been there about a calendar year and a half.
Okay, okay.
And our architect, our garage, sort of land person that did the driveway, went up there again, um, because he still, and he found drainage, it's running right off the property. So we had plans to have our whole, uh, property dug up again and put, um, stone barriers.
We actually have a permit that's.
For the work.
That's gonna be up here.
So they're gonna, he was gonna try and divert the drainage into, divert what's coming down into the drainage we had installed already last year, so.
But there is a, I don't know if you saw, cause it's covered by a lot of not-eaten stuff, but there is a, um, a manhole. There's a manhole, right? I think it's on their side, the property that, you know, maybe they could put a drainage or something there and tie it in.
Yeah, our, our big thing is the, um, landscaping and the water. And as far as lighting goes, there are so many lights on the back of the school, like our neighbors three houses down are always seeing the lights coming from off the back of the school that they more enjoy.
A hundred feet, you're gonna have drainage problems. My question to the commission is, do you require a drainage study when you walk in something like this?
Are you having problems with, as a school is?
We're, we're having problems now, I can imagine, when they put the snow up, they're gonna laugh, that's what the gentleman has said. We're gonna have, I mean, what's nice today is gonna be a nightmare for us.
I see.
Do you require, as a commission, drainage study?
Well, that's why we're having a public hearing, so we can hear what the problem is.
No, I mean, as your regulations say, look, when you have a project this big, we wanna see a drainage study.
Well, you've got, they're not changing the site legitimately, you know, different parking and so forth. But to you, for you to bring this up, this is.
I'm, I'm running just to the left of that.
Okay.
My understanding is that they are changing it, they're cutting trees, the gentleman says there. We would not treat you, gonna have more water.
True.
We already have a lot of problems.
Okay. Alright, you hear all this and?
Yeah, actually, the, the area up in the, uh, upper left portion is paved, so we're removing a, a lot of that, that area.
Pointer, could you put a pointer up there? You're talking about.
Up there, that area there, so that's all.
Is that the area near you? He's pointing out that.
Yeah, we get it from both sides.
Okay.
Or a hundred feet from that.
I, I know, but are you a hundred feet that way, or are you up there?
It's a beautiful project, but what's nice for somebody is gonna be a nightmare for us.
Well, no, that's, we're trying to nip this in the bud when we're talking about it now, thank you.
Yeah, that, that area, again, is gonna be removed as far as pavement, and will just be grassed.
So what, what additional drainage are you planning to do up here?
Um, for the drainage, for the area that we're removing pavement, none. And there'll be, um, in that, that one little portion of, uh, parking up there, there'll be off-site or, um, onsite drainage, just running off the site. So it'll be less.
What do you mean, that's it? You're gonna have discharges into the ground up there?
Yeah, just water runoff. Well, there's, it is a very small area, really, compared to what we're, we're, we're removing.
Alright, uh, yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Michael Gentile, I'm a resident at one sixty-six Pratt Street. Uh, my wife and I have been there for, since two thousand thirteen, uh, very happy with the town of Winstead. Um, I just have a couple of questions. Are there gonna be pickleball courts? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, she's there.
My first serious question is, uh, when is construction actually gonna begin? And, and when will it be completed? And, uh, will there be any interruption in utilities such as gas, electric? And, uh, third question is, are the residents gonna be able to have pets, animals?
Okay, thank you. Can you respond to that, please?
Um, sure. Uh, so, we can't say exactly when the construction will start because we, uh, need to get through, um, this process and then fully develop all of the architectural plans, um, and then put it out to bid. Uh, and then, um, apply for the funding to build it. Um, so, um, I would say the hope is that we might be in construction by the middle of twenty twenty-six. Um, and it would probably take, I, again, most of the construction will be in the interior of the building. Um, but, uh, I would say it'd probably take a year to finish a project like this. Um, I don't think there would be a disruption in the utilities to the neighborhood. Certainly, there would be to the building itself. And.
Pets.
Pets, um, uh, I, that's really a decision that the board would have to make. Most of the affordable rental housing that I am familiar with in the region does not allow pets. Um, but that's really a policy question, I think, for the Winchester Housing Partners Board. Rather than necessarily anything I could say tonight, um.
Alright, anybody else in the audience have any comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you can answer this, but I'm worried about privacy for my home.
Your name, your name and.
I'm sorry.
Address, please.
Melissa Miller-Agno, twenty-six Lovely Street. Um, I'm worried about the privacy, so, um, it's connected to my woods, so I just wanna make sure, like, how much you're actually cutting down. Cause it says robust landscaping plan, and I'm not sure how close that would be to my house.
Yeah, I don't think, we're, we're not planning to cut down any trees.
No, the, the only trees that we're talking about, possibly cutting down, is near the entrance, existing entrance. There are a couple of dead trees in that clump, in there.
Yeah.
That's it.
I think you mentioned along a fence line as well.
Um. Yeah, I mean, we're, we'll remove dead things, um, but we're not planning on cutting down any live trees. Um, but we're just planning on cutting down dead trees.
In your presentation, you said you were gonna cut trees down to the left over there. I mean, I was here for your presentation, it's on the tape, you said that you were gonna cut trees to the left up top.
Uh, I, well, if we said that, we were wrong.
I think the only area that we're talking about changing is where the walk is up on the left side.
Up here?
Um, all the way on the lower left, sorry. The walkway, yeah, from there going down.
Yeah.
Oh, we'll, we'll remove the walkway and plant arbor miding, which is a great barrier. That's all we're talking about doing. And there's exist, existing trees to the left of that that we'll retain unless they're dead.
And the drainage that the gentleman was talking about is in that area also.
Yeah.
Does it, do you go back to the bigger side with the whole property, every one acres? You can see it's still kinda far away from the Lovely Street side of the property.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not.
Justin, point, point out Lovely Street on the small map up there.
Is it here?
First, right there, yep.
Right there, yeah, okay. Well, so the back, the back of some of that property, it only has this buffer, right?
Right.
Between it, is that what you're, is that where you are?
You're, I don't know who the letter came from, but the letter that came to us said that it's within a hundred feet of our property.
Yeah, so again.
Somebody also looked it up, and I don't think you would send out a letter that says a hundred feet, but it isn't.
Yeah, so that's just, that's just a standard letter that just says something, uh, there is an application before the commission that is, that has to do with property within a hundred feet. It doesn't mean that anything particular is happening within a hundred feet?
Well, no, but I mean, our property is within a hundred feet.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, so I think what we were trying to show here.
So by looking at that map, you're saying that Lovely Street's far away, while your letter says it's within a hundred feet. A hundred feet, isn't that far?
It's a hundred feet of this property, but I, I think what Risto was pointing out is that, so your property is over here. There's this area and this area where nothing is, is, uh, proposed at all. Um, before you get over to any of this.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, is that the wood?
This?
Is that a wooded area?
There is some, and, and large space, yeah.
We're not, we're not intending to take down, I mean, again, if there are dead things here, we could take them down, but we aren't intending to.
But the green area is a wooded area and the, the area one retained by the town, which also borders some properties, is also wooded.
Unchanged.
Right.
Unch- and unchanged, so.
Yeah, and, and it's downhill, so all the water comes towards our house.
But that's obviously, that's been doing that for a while, huh?
Well, that, I said, I stated before that we've had this problem, and we, and, and this is gonna make it worse.
Yeah.
And what, and what, that's what I said, is what's nice for some people is gonna become a nightmare for us, and how's that fair?
Okay, anybody else in the audience have anything? Anybody on the commission have anything to comment on?
Questions?
Questions or?
No.
We, we've got, uh, a number of things that have come in from staff. This is from, uh, James Legasi, the fire marshal. Said he doesn't have any issues with the plans and look forward to reviewing a full set of plans for construction documents. This is the, the, uh, police chief. Developers should employ crime prevention through environmental design, CPDED, methods during the design and planning of construction and construction process. The second is clear exterior, interior signage, building and unit numbering should be included to assist with emergency response. You're not talking about that, so you might, before I go to any other, how would you do that? So you get people, if there's an emergency response, an ambulance or something that come up there, how would they know where the unit would be that's calling for the response?
We could definitely have one of those panels, um, there's, you know, a panel for emergency service responders that specifically say what unit the call came from, um, we could certainly have one of those.
So each unit will have to have a designated identification number, obviously.
Right.
And, uh, speaking of that, you, how are you, how are you gonna distribute mail up there?
There's a mailroom.
So there's a mailroom, so they'll have their mail points, okay.
Would access to the building be controlled or key card or something, or just walk in, open a door and go down the hallway and find where you're, you're looking for somebody?
Um, we haven't talked through that yet, um, but I would assume the access, there would be a key to get into the main entrances of the building. Um, and some kind of buzzer system, but we haven't gotten to that level.
Have you received any of these things that were sent to the, uh, planning office?
I gave them to Paul, but I don't know if, uh, I CC'd you guys on that.
The letter from the fire marshal?
Well, all of these, that are, we got the fire marshal, and we got.
Building official.
Building ch- the chief of police.
I haven't seen them, but I'm sure Paul will pass them along.
What we wanna do is whatever happens here tonight, or with, whatever, when we do make a decision, uh, if it does go forward, these, all of these things should be incorporated so that you can take advantage of it.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, because one of them is, uh, Mr. Roma is talking about the one small laundry room being adequate for all of the residents.
Exactly, yeah. So the next one is Jeff Green, who's our, uh, his assistant top planners, zoning enforcement in the West Asia, white official, he's got a long list. Let's see, uh, the.
No, he's, he's, he's okay, he's.
Oh, he's looking for it.
He's.
So there's nothing there of, uh, need there.
La Roma.
Agostino Roma, who's the, uh, building official. Sprinkler alarm systems will be mandatory according to the twenty twenty-two international building code. Cooking appliances in each unit must be listed and labeled for residential use. I have a concern regarding the one small laundry room for the entire residency. And my other concern is regarding the required ADA apartments not being listed, or would they all be ADA compliant?
Um, I don't think they will all be ADA, I think they'll be, um, many of them are, if not all of them, will be adaptable, but I don't think they'll all be ADA.
Okay, sure.
But you have a requirement, they ha- they have to provide so many per.
Correct.
Correct.
Alright, well, these are.
How about the laundry room thing? Is that an issue? Or you'll look at it?
We'll look at it. One small laundry room is the question, yeah. Uh, Lance, you have some things, let's see.
Okay, there's nothing there.
Nothing really from, from your manager describing what you're, so.
No, you brought it up with the, the addressing, um, we'll figure that out, if it's gonna stay one seventy-nine or not.
Okay, so in, in Jim's, he didn't have any comments on storm drainage. Is that, is that under the heading of what people are talking about here?
Yes, yeah, well, they're, because they have no proposal to do anything.
They don't have any proposals to do anything.
There's issues that were brought up.
But should they? I mean, in other, just cause they're not.
Well, part of this property is gonna be retained by the town and done something with, which is that area one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and nothing's being planned up there, but, but, but there. Uh, and nothing's being planned up there, but if they're, if that property is impacting the neighbors, and there's nothing that's developed, usually, uh, without a construction project going on, it'd be something you'd have to handle yourself, what you're receiving is dealt with. You know, I've got, you know, a piece of property that I've got that, uh, I've got water that comes in from another higher ground, and I'd have to deal with it. Uh, but if they're doing something that's changing where the water's gonna go on in the property they're working with.
Well, how do we know that? How do we know that?
We don't know, that's where, that's where we've got some input, but it sounds like from Lovely Street, you might be getting something from the higher elevations that's, is going down.
Oh, oh, oh.
I don't know, I mean, I'm I'm just speculating.
We can live with that now, how long, if we can't live with it after the project is done?
Well, they're not changing the, the in, they're not.
It's my understanding that they are, then I was here for the presentation, maybe put snow up there, have some trees up there, I mean, I don't know what they're doing.
Well. Well, they had, they've been dealing, how long have you lived there, did you say? Since thirteen?
Five, six years.
Five, six years. All right, because they had, when the school, how long ago since the school was operating?
Fifty-nine.
A while, yeah.
That's what it said in. Well, they built it in fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But since it stopped, you mean, since it stopped out there?
Yeah, since, yeah, because there was snow removal when it was open, obviously, and they've had traffic.
But this thing closed decades, yeah.
Quite a while.
June, um, twenty twenty-two.
Not that long, 'cause until they opened Hiddstale, it was open till they opened, redid Hiddstale, so that's only been three, two, three years.
Oh, right, 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 right.
And then there were the cats that were in there.
Right, the cats.
But yeah, we're not, we're not proposing taking down any trees over in that area on the left-hand side. Um, we are only removing pavement, which will help with the drainage.
When they had the school there, they plowed all the paved areas and everything too, so it was plowed.
All right, well, this is, I appreciate your, yes, sir.
Just, um, I can add something for them that may help with the, uh, the snow.
Yeah.
If they put it down in the front left corner, there's actually a storm drain right at the bottom of there.
In the whole front section?
A town, there's, yeah, right, right between our property and the school property, there's a, there's a storm drain right in the street right there. So at least that way we're draining towards the street.
I see, okay.
If that helps.
All right. This slide doesn't show all the planting they're gonna plan on doing either, so.
Yeah, that's the.
Is there storm drains on the actual, uh, parking lot there?
Yeah, yeah.
You could add parking spaces and designate the area for sto- for for snow storage on the pavement within the curb space and have it drain into, you know, our system, right? Is that allowed? And another, I see another area where we're going to remove that walkway. It could be swelled out, and I don't know, you'd have to talk to engineers, um, and possibly make an area for retention basin down that left corner, if you're gonna disturb that area anyway, but an engineer would tell you that. If there's opportunity there.
That would help a lot.
Okay, the, uh, we've got, uh, Mike, uh, Rook from the, uh, community college is, uh, placed a support for this, and, uh, Laura McCarthy, uh, she was in favor of supporting this too. Okay, do we have anything else from anybody, uh, staff wise?
Jimmy Rollins is talking about a, uh, property adjustment, a plan adjustment. I didn't hear that.
Yeah, he was talking about moving it to where there's a stone wall on that property, that would be on the upper.
Moving it, different than what's proposed here, or moving it in accordance with proposed?
I think, I think it's up in this area, I'm not sure. Maybe a stone wall there. I believe that's something the town would have to look out with before they sell the property.
Well, he talks about the property line west of area one and east of area two should be adjusted eastward to a stone wall, right, and north-south.
Oh, east, okay.
Uh, this will improve maintenance and access for both parcels as well as keep the drainage swale as part of the property which it serves. It probably makes sense to have reciprocal easements to pass and repass over each other's parcels
Yeah, definitely.
for purposes of maintenance and forest management and such.
You'll get this, you'll see that.
Yeah, good. So you have this whole package that you can.
For them, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments from the, uh, commission?
Before what? What happens next?
Well, if we either oppose the public hearing or if we need more information and more data, then, uh, we'll continue with what.
Well, I'm still kinda wondering about how we find out about drainage, or, you know, how, in other words, I've sat on these and we get some pretty specific plans, and when we make a motion to approve it's according to the plan that's presented, and all of the background engineering and so forth, do we have all that?
Do you wanna see the complete topo map to take a look at that?
I mean, they said they haven't really even gone into the.
Well, they're not changing anything that's there, that's why you probably haven't got anything.
I see.
Any existing buildings.
I see, okay.
They're removing previous pavement, reducing that considerably and putting grass in.
Yeah. So that helps.
That should help.
With drainage issues, yeah.
Some, yes.
But just what you had suggested along that boundary, whether they're gonna take that whole walkway out as an opportunity to try to get it into that drainage structure.
But we can't, we can't, uh, we can't mandate that, we're asking them to consider that. I'm just, I.
Oh, oh, that's a consideration that we have, but.
I'm an alternate, so I'm trying to ease into what, what we can do when.
Sh- short of doing a full drainage study, is there an LID plan for any changes we're making?
I know we had, um, based all our, our design based on a plan that was done, I'm trying to think now, maybe twenty years ago, um, on the upper portion to capture a lot of the storm drainage and take it off-site. So again, I don't think there's anything additional that's gonna be, gonna be, gonna be imposed on, uh, on the site, because we're putting a lot of it back to grass.
You're gonna reduce some of the contributing possibilities there.
Yeah. Like thirteen thousand square feet.
But where you're taking that walkway that comes down from an upper level toward the front, might be considered to be able to shape that a little bit to get the drainage to come down into that structure that's in the front.
Lance, has Wetlands reviewed any of this at all?
No, nothing kicks in there.
Nothing for sedimentation and erosion controls or anything else in these plans?
Yeah, you pretty much mentioned it, I mean, the previous coverage is going to be less.
Right, but they're still gonna be excavating where you need sedimentation and erosion controls on this.
Right. And, um, unfortunately, you know, we had two summers ago of incredible rain, we had flooding all over town, so I'm very understanding of the problems that you've been dealing with.
We knew that there was gonna be.
Yeah.
A lottery issue, I mean, that was, that was, we knew that going in.
Well, Wednesday.
We just don't want this to increase, like I.
Right. This, this should not increase.
And I think taking out the pavement and the playground area is gonna be a huge help, because that's where it's coming from.
Right. Right.
Mm-hmm.
Table it so they can answer our questions?
No. We could close a public comment and still talk amongst ourselves.
Well, that, that we could do, but, uh, just the seated members then would just discuss it, be on. Uh, but if we need more information with regards to that concern, we might continue this so that we could get that information and make a, without closing the public hearing, and we could have more input.
But what would we, if you're saying they, we really can't, if they're not changing the layout or any of that, so whatever you're saying.
Well, they are changing it, though, they're talking about that walkway coming down, that's what we're talking about with Adams.
Okay. Yeah. So could we have a minor analysis of that kind of thing?
Well, that's what, that's what, that's what.
You can just give us a written response too, like you said, if they could take that out and create a swale down to the catch basin that they're talking about. They can check the drain out that we had talked about with the neighbors, and then they could review the comments from the, uh, land use office and answer those.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And if we leave it open.
Can you do that, Paul?
It's J-butt, yes.
Sorry, no wonder you didn't look.
What about the, uh, changing the parking so it doesn't shine across the street? Is that something we should be?
Well, I think he's gonna check that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's shaking his head.
Yeah.
Maybe just.
If you pull your car in, you'll see the, the lights will go over the roofs.
Keep the lights on.
Yeah, different kind of landscaping to get the lower.
Yeah, keep the parking away from the entryway, move it away from the entryway where it's lower, bring it up at a higher elevation.
Yeah.
Now, i- i- is the goal to get to a point where we're approving this permit and they're, they're going forward on it?
Well, we.
Except for the commission?
We wanna, yeah, that's what we're talking about, should we close the public hearing?
I think we should leave it open till we get the answers.
Yeah.
I, I agree, I agree. And everybody else?
Yeah.
Agree on that?
Yeah.
All right, so I think we should continue this, but we've got some specifics with regards to what you're doing with the drainage there.
Because, yeah, I think we should have detail on, on the site plan with the dumpster, fencing.
Yeah.
Yes.
And everything, that should be included.
We're talking the silt fences to all that.
And sedimentation and erosion control measures, we need a sheet or two.
And then the response, some of the responses, the responses to, uh, what the various town staff, um, indicated in their letters.
Town staff.
Why don't we give them a copy of this package?
I, I know Paul has it, but, um, yeah.
Well, let's not doubt it.
I know they have it now.
Stocker facing your paper.
I didn't.
It's all listed as attachments on open.gov too, so.
Well, let's make sure they have it, so that's what we just did, so that's good. Uh, so that's what we, we would need, some clarification on what you're gonna do when you take that walkway out and how you're gonna drain that. And any other questions that were risen?
And additional detail on the dumpster.
Dumpster.
Area, fencing. And showing the relocation of the parking areas away from the driveway.
Yeah.
It's a limited problem with the lights.
Did you put any details about the lights in here?
Uh, there's a, um, a drawing of the whole, and, uh, and the followers as well.
There's one sheet in here in this talk, but I don't know what you're gonna include with this, but. Sheet, uh, L one oh one. See this whole, we've got sixteen here. So you've got the first eight, see this whole thing, first five. There's one possibly in us.
Everybody else is good.
Yeah, so is everybody else, so I think that.
All right, so we need a, uh, we need a motion from the commission to, uh, continue the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to, um.
Thirteen to January.
You can't hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Make a motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you start the motion?
Yeah, I just made it.
Oh, you did, okay.
To continue the public hearing.
The January thirteenth.
The January thirteenth, thank you for the date.
I'll second.
We got a second. Any, uh, comments, discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. So we'll continue this to the, uh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Playing those games.
Yep, yeah.
All right. So we're gonna go to, uh, five B. This is the, uh.
Thank you.
This is the CGS eight twenty-four referral for, uh, town owned parcels, so we've got a, a request to, uh, look at each of these and make a recommendation to the, uh, board to select them with regards to, uh, they have indicated they'd like to sell these things, it's up to them how they wanna do it, but, uh, so let's take the first one as, uh, everybody ready on this, two sixty-nine, uh, Walden Street? Now, let's do, review each and make a decision.
That's the first one. First one's Hill Street.
First one's nineteen Hill Street.
Oh, okay, all right, oh, oh, yeah, right, nineteen Hill Street.
Um, I, I just have to ask a question, what's, what's our purpose in reviewing it? What do we?
It's the eight twenty-four referral.
No, I, I understand that, but what are we supposed to do?
Okay, if we have knowledge of something in the neighborhood that would require the town to retain this because it would help in the development.
I see.
Then we would say.
Value to the town for town purposes or something.
Yeah.
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 Understood, yeah.
Don't worry on that, we still have access to the right here.
Got you.
Okay, so this is a, uh,
Did you have to make a, a motion for each one?
Yes, we're gonna do as we go through.
Can't do an omnibus motion here, or?
Two of those. All right, so this is, this is just a vacant lot.
Uh, make a motion that Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission approved the eight twenty-four referral for the sale of town own point two two acre parcel at nineteen Hill Street located in the town's single family zoning district.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I don't even know where it is.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm not seated anymore. Risto's back, so I can't, I can't second it. Risto's back.
I'll second it.
No, wait a minute, Risto, because you're seated, Risto, for tonight.
Yeah, Risto, Risto's.
Yeah. You're on.
This is confusing, all right. And we made a motion, so we gotta redo that.
No, I made a motion.
Oh, you made a motion.
Adam will second.
We need a sec, Adam will second.
Adam will second.
Okay.
All right, so that's the first one.
We gotta hold on.
Yep. All in favor of the motion?
Uh, what is this?
This is the, uh, it's selling the town.
Next one is, uh, one twenty-four.
Can we restate it, you?
Yep, 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 sorry.
What's the next one? Let me find it, I'm finding it. Uh, make a motion that the Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission approved the eight twenty-four referral to the sale of town own point four four acre parcel at one twenty-four Rockwell Street located in the town of Winchester, town center residential zoning district.
Uh, who's, who seconded this first motion?
Adam did?
Oh, Adam. So I'll second this one.
Okay, this is the one twenty-four Rockwell.
One twenty-four Rockwell.
Any comments on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
I don't know, I'm looking.
Well, they're, they're voting on it, so you gotta vote.
Yeah.
All right, let's catch up with this.
Yeah, I am, oh, I'm not gonna do anymore, I'm trying to get these in order, so.
Three Bridge, Town Street.
Trying to get the motions in order, so here.
Some of these lots are really small.
So, yeah.
Well, and, you know, I, I didn't have a problem with any of them, but I, I don't necessarily agree with the memo that we got that it's going to make create twelve thousand dollars in tax revenue, you know, if it gets combined with the land next door, that's gonna be accessible.
Well, you know what, that's not our issue.
Yeah, that's, so, but just, and I don't have a problem with that, I just wanted to note.
And that's not for anybody to.
No, you're right, 'cause it's over, it's overblown.
I just wanted to note that I didn't, I don't think that's.
Most of the visual appraisal stuff is wrong.
Yeah.
It has houses on it, it has pools on it that aren't there, it has garages that aren't there. Most of it's wrong.
Yeah. So, but, but they, they're trying to make a, a point, I guess.
Well, the problem is there's been points made that are not.
I, I understand, but like you said, that's.
So is, is there a way even, oh, we, we have all different motion sheets?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One for each one.
So we can't do that.
What's the next one?
Everybody signed everything?
Forty-eight Bridge.
Forty-eight Bridge, let's go to, uh. Forty-eight Bridge. It's going to, uh.
Forty-eight Bridge. Motion that the Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission approved the eight twenty-four referral for the sale of town owned point one five acre parcel at forty-eight Bridge Street located in the town's center residential zoning district.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. Adam.
Adam's second. Okay. Discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion? Okay, all right, unanimous. All right.
Hubbard Street.
Yep.
Ninety-nine Hubbard.
Let's, let's just get the paperwork.
Get the paperwork signed first. Got plenty of time. Yeah, most of these properties, there were structures on them and had, the houses were removed. Make a motion that the Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission approved the eight twenty-four referral for the sale of town owned point three seven acre parcel at ninety-nine Hubbard Street located in the town's center residential zoning district.
I'll second Hubbard Street.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion?
No.
All in favor?
Can you see that one?
Two sixty-nine one?
Yeah. Let's get the sheet filed.
Mm-hmm. That's where that, that house is taken down, down there?
Yes.
Yeah, that was it.
This looks like a nice lot.
Nice lot there. There you go. That's.
Is that a butt tetros pond?
Yes.
It does.
But it's.
Down.
Behind it. It's a steep slope right behind it.
Yeah.
That's a nice piece of property. Two sixty-nine.
Yeah, that is a nice one up.
Probably the most valuable one there.
Uh, make a motion that the Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission approved the eight twenty-four referral for the sale of town owned half acre, point five acre parcel at two sixty-nine Walnut Street located in the town's single family zoning district. I'll second it.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion? Unanimous. Okay. All right, Marshall.
Buy stamps for each one of us. We're gonna have to sign them.
That's right.
I'm getting credit scraps.
Nice structure. What's going on up there? So the town owns this right now?
Yeah.
And, and that structure's still on it?
Yep.
How come that didn't get demolished? Just aside?
Cause it's repairable.
It is?
Insavable.
It is? Okay.
It's not.
It's just the picture just.
Yeah, it's rough.
It's rough.
Yes. There's a long story why it is rough.
Oh, okay.
We can talk about it.
I don't need to.
Do the owners. Which one sits?
Marshall Street. Motion that the Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission approved the eight twenty-four referral for the sale of town owned point eight acre, eight tenths of an acre, nine thirty-six square foot home at one oh nine Marshall Street located in the rural residential zoning district.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
So I do, just so for the three with the properties on them that are still blighted, um, can we make a recommendation that, or a suggestion maybe, that there be a reclusion clause? So if we sell the property and they don't, uh, clean it up within a certain timeframe, it can come back? So we don't have to go, that whole blight process of finding everybody again?
That's a really good idea.
Yeah. It's a good idea. So who made the motion?
Free but.
I did.
He made the motion.
You wanna modify the motion? Mark it in there.
Yeah. Um. Run that one by me again now.
Um, that'd be every.
Eric, you can write it underneath the motion there.
Um.
Up, up above where my signature says.
With the condition.
Yeah.
That blight be remediated? And if not.
Well, within.
Within a certain period of time.
Yeah, but what would that be?
I think we can leave.
Leave it up to Stan?
That to, to, you know, the, the deal, the agreement that they make.
With the town when it sells.
With the town, with the sales.
And that would have to be made at the, uh, Selectment's meeting.
Yeah, be remediated.
Looks like the town is gonna do something. There's a backhoe sitting in the yard.
No, they were using, did some drainage up there.
Yeah, they've been.
But they did, they already did Marshall Street. Cause they have catch basins and stuff pile up there for the last year or more. They just finished up, I think, the last of the drainage.
It took a long time for them to finish it.
Transfer property.
After Johnny died?
Yes. Well, that's because.
Although, well, another one that's in the state.
So I just, I put with the condition that the blight be remediated, if not, a reclusion clause be added to the transfer of the property.
Okay.
Makes sense.
So.
They need a second.
That was a motion need a second, huh?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor? Okay.
Why don't you write it on this one too?
Okay.
There's a house on that one when you're done.
Sure.
For the record, that house is not salvageable.
Huh?
I know, one oh four.
But still. We've, we've put it on one. We might just have put it on all three.
Yeah.
That's one on Cota Street. That one really needs to come down.
That's a fire trap.
So that house looks worse now than it does in picture.
Oh, yeah. I know.
Oh my.
Yes.
The picture is pretty bad.
Yeah, that's a fire trap, that one is.
But obviously, nobody's in it.
No, no. That we know of. That we know of. That we know of.
We're up on that one a lot too.
Okay, one oh four, uh.
Just waiting for Russ to finish writing that. Good, one oh four. Yep, yep. Motion that the Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission approved the eight twenty-four referral for the sale of town owned point five acre, nine eight hundred eighty square foot home at one oh four Norfolk Road located in the rural residential zoning district. The condition that blight be remediated, if not, a reclusion clause be added to transfer of property. I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion? Okay, unanimous.
Yeah, that'll help.
I think the word we want is a rescission clause, not a reclusion clause.
I think it is. You're right.
A rescission?
Yeah. But that thing, you know, the town attorney would be drawn up that anyway.
Russ, you need to sign that one.
Okay, in the final?
Yep. Motion that the Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission approved the eight twenty-four referral for the sale of town owned two point two tenths of an acre, twenty, two thousand sixteen square foot multifamily home at fifty fifty-two Cota Street located in the town's single family zoning district. Condition that blight be remediated, if not, a reclusion clause be added to the transfer to the property.
Okay, so we got the motion. Who seconded? Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion? Unanimous. Thank you.
Who seconded it?
Oh, I remember.
I'll take that.
That power goes right to me.
I used to that.
Good thing we all double check it.
Yeah, we have to.
You had your chance.
Pass the paper back and forth here so fast. I didn't check, George. What the heck?
All right. Other business? Election of officers, the chair, vice chair, and secretary for you next year.
Only, uh, seated members? Alternates don't vote on this, do they? Probably not. I mean.
I'd have to go back and look.
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
Been so long.
Um, we'll have to buy a lawsuit.
I do too.
Got them in my other book. Punch this book into.
Somewhere. Hold on.
Carrying everything with you, huh?
I do.
You got to.
I just gotta remember where I put it.
That's my problem, trying to find it.
Yeah.
Somebody's still waiting.
Election of officers. You choose the first regular meeting of December. Commission shall hold elections. Members and alternates may vote in the elections.
Okay.
And alternates both.
Yep.
All right. All right, so who, uh?
I'll make a motion to elect George Costin chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second it.
Okay. Everybody can participate.
He's a member.
Well, everybody can participate.
I know, but he's a member now. He's seated. He's a regular member now.
You're picking up.
I have to treat him differently.
Oh, you do?
He's got power over you now. Taking her seat.
Yeah, first thing he wants to do, hustle my seat. Okay.
All right, any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Sorry.
All in favor of the nomination? I'm staying. All right, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, nominate, uh, Peter for the, uh, vice chair position.
I'll second.
It's been seconded. Any other nominations for vice chair?
Anybody, please.
Sorry.
Oh, no.
No other nominations for vice chair? All right. All in favor of the, the nomination?
At least this, at least this time, I'm at the meeting.
Don't forget John's not here.
The last time I wasn't at the meeting, that's all.
That's how you got it, right?
Let's make, let's give it to John.
As a, as a chance.
Let's make John do it.
I'll nominate John Cooney as secretary.
Second, second. Any other nominations for secretary? Any other nominations? All in favor of the nomination? Okay.
Sorry, who was the second for that? You nominated John and George.
Uh, George is second.
Yeah, I second, yeah. All right, uh, any changes in the, uh, proposed two thousand twenty-five meeting schedule? I need to bring my copy with me.
Uh, I've got.
I haven't seen any problems with it.
Okay.
Everything looked good.
Okay, if that's, uh, if we're all in favor of it, then, uh, we'll just, uh, post that if you could, please. We don't have any minutes available for us?
No, so Lauren fortunately has been out with an injury, uh, so. Because he's a one man show.
He gave us.
So he's gonna be working, but we should have them both by next meeting.
How's Lauren doing? Okay.
Into. Okay, I'm, I'm thinking that she's young, so she'll bounce back. She had knee surgery.
Yeah, I know she did.
All right, uh, correspondence regarding PZC twenty-fourth Affordable Housing Special Permit application.
And I was told I shouldn't have listed it there, but those were the two emails that you got from.
Oh, okay. Did I, you actually talked about that? Okay. Any other issues that you're dealing with?
No other, no.
We don't have a meeting at the end of this month, so this is the end of it for, uh.
Twenty twenty-four.
Any other comments with regards to anything that we've got coming up or keep going forward?
Can I connect them all?
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Happy Christmas. Hey, Lance.
Yes, you too.
Lance, so I, so I don't get harassed at the next meeting?
So, hey.
Put him here.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
How can you get harassed?
Next meeting, are you gonna be here next meeting or you will leave and be in Florida?
Oh, that's even worse. You'll do it when I'm not here, right? I'll end up sitting out in the, uh.
We can have a, wait a minute, we can have election of officers then too.
I'm not a member.